Uh, the board. I would see what the board is meeting third. Uh, but it's, it's.
Do you need help, Adam?
Maybe, we'll see. I just need the link because it's not arriving for me.
Your, your mic is live too, by the way.
Okay.
When I said you're on the court, I can't get it to right now. It's not wide. It's hard to get people to do it. Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. I've been curious to see that. I don't like the way people are doing this. We got there.
Jerry, this is not streaming, you nice?
Thank you so much.
Okay.
No, it's maybe. Okay, I got it.
Which means it does make sense.
It does make sense then.
Because it's a table.
Was the streaming question?
Everything is going on.
Is that streaming at all?
Yeah. Everything is going on.
We'll be ready to go in just a minute. We've switched to a new agenda system and it's given us some trouble. All right, we're ready. It's six oh five and I'm calling to order the meeting of the Carbondale Local Liquor Control Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Uh, Chairperson Harvey is absent, so Commissioner Los is acting as Chair Pro Tem. Commissioner Columbo?
Present.
Commissioner Kilman?
Present.
Commissioner Maxwell?
Present.
Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Stanfield?
Present.
Chair Pro Tem Los?
Present. The first item on the agenda is public comments. This is public comments for items related to liquor that are not on the agenda. Does anyone want to comment on liquor items that are not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we will move to the next item, the general business. Oh, I did not see you, sir. Come on up.
Hello. Uh, I am Mayor, City Council, Mayor, City Manager, Mayor, Sane Hostage, Jarris K. Harvey, Carbondale resident. I was just hoping to inform the Liquor Control Commission as well as the City Council. If you all did not receive my email prior to this meeting, City, City of Carbondale Mayor Pro Tem Los has lowered himself out of the ability to serve and due to this cannot hold the title of Mayor Pro Tem. I have contacted the city attorney. He has declined me to take the seat as the singular man of the Harvey family and son of the mayor, of the sitting man of the City of Carbondale. So I would just like to inform you all that all actions, votes, et cetera, for the Liquor Control Commission as well as the City Council meeting will be non-legal because there is not a voting mayor nor a legal mayoral representative to represent the City of Carbondale as well as the city business of the City of Carbondale, Illinois. Period. Space, space, space. That is all. My comment is end.
Thank you for those comments, sir. Does anybody else want to comment on an item related to liquor that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Seeing no one, we will move to the next item on the agenda. That is approval of the Local Liquor Control Commission meetings from the meeting of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Item three point one are the minutes from the Local Liquor Control Commission meeting of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. The recommended action is to approve.
Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Ms. Kilman?
I move that we approve the Local Liquor Control Commission meeting minutes from October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second? Ms. Roberts?
A second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Columbo?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilman?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanfield?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tem Los?
Yes. That is adopted. The next item is liquor license renewals for calendar year twenty twenty-six.
On September twenty-ninth, liquor license renewal applications were emailed to annual liquor license holders with a due date of November first. Of the sixty-seven annual liquor license establishments, forty-nine have submitted all outstanding items. Other establishments must submit remaining documents, fees, or debts before their liquor license can be issued. One license holder submitted their renewal after the November first deadline and must remit the late fee plus their liquor license fee. Attached, for the commission's consideration, is a report on underage sales of alcohol conducted by the Illinois Liquor Commission. The police department reports no alcohol-related arrests at any licensed establishment for the year. The city's building and fire inspector did not submit any reports, although inspections were conducted. There are minimum percentage requirements by license classification itemized below. I can go over those if you would like. For business data report discrepancies, the following application has a correction or issues related to data provided. For Cristodos, the report was incomplete. There were no sales reported. This must be corrected before the license can be issued. For outstanding fees, fines, and taxes, it itemizes those that are outstanding. For Cristodos, the first, second, and third quarter for twenty twenty-five F and B taxes, El Paisano, third quarter late fee, twenty twenty-five F and B taxes. Garden Grove, first, second, and third quarter F and B taxes. Indigo, Event Space and Lounge, fourth quarter for twenty twenty-four, plus the first, second, and third quarter for this year. Key West, first, second, and third quarter for twenty twenty-five F and B taxes. Larry's, first quarter late fees, second, and third quarter F and B taxes. Both Little Vegas locations, they pay annually and they have not remitted. Manny's, AKA Best Western, second quarter F and B taxes, as well as late fees for hotel motel taxes. Plaza Liquors, they owe late fees for their packer luggage, package liquor taxes. Tandoor and Todka, they owe fourth quarter for twenty twenty-four, first, second, and third quarter twenty twenty-five F and B taxes. And Tie Taste, a second quarter late fees and third quarter twenty twenty-five F and B taxes. There was not a review by the Liquor Advisory Board, as there are no members currently appointed. The board last met in twenty twenty-two. The recommended action is the approval of their liquor licenses contingent upon receipt of outstanding items, including the submission of all outstanding food and beverage taxes and late fees, or if the commission wants to have any license pulled for separate consideration, separate motions can be made on any or all applications for renewals. Denial of license renewal should be based on one or more provisions of the state or the city liquor code.
Thank you. I think the first thing would be to decide if anyone wants to pull anything for separate consideration. Does anyone want to handle any license separately? Seeing no one, then we will handle them all together. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Columbo?
Is the motion to, simply to approve all liquor licenses presented?
That's the motion I would anticipate, but you would be able to make whatever motion you wanted.
I'm just double checking. Yeah, I would motion that we approve the liquor license as presented with all, considering all outstanding. Messing this up real bad. I would move that we approve all liquor licenses as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Stanfield?
I second.
Is there any discussion from council on this issue? Are there any comments from the public? Mr. Monty?
Just a technical point. I know you've gone to a new system. For the life of me, I could not find the text of this agenda item on the website. I saw all the attachments, but I didn't see the item, so I didn't have a chance to read it before the meeting. Thank you.
I couldn't find it either. I could find it for council meetings, but not for this. So, ma'am in the back?
Hi, Elva Prince. I want to know, do you know how many liquor licenses you have here in Carbondale?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
Would you mind saying your name for the record?
Elva, E-L-V-A Prince.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public? Back to council, anything more? Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Columbo?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilman?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanfield?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tem Los?
Yes. And that item passes. There is no further business to come before the Carbondale Liquor Control Commission, so we will adjourn this meeting at six fifteen and will wait a moment so that our equipment can reset and then we will start the council meeting.
Okay, is this what I'm supposed to be seeing? Click on this.
Well, that's not the board.
Okay, so that's.
You can look at there if you wish to.
That's the tutorial thing. You can close that. What do you need to get to?
There's nothing I can do right now.
Okay.
This makes it feel like we can do it after the meeting.
Okay. We'll have to do that because I was trying to follow the link and it just wasn't giving me anything.
So if you want, you can go with this. You can open each back. This is the public's board.
Is that, which email is that that you sent?
The first one, the one that stated twenty-four.
All right, it is six seventeen and I'm calling to order this meeting of the Carbondale City Council. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Columbo?
Present.
Councilmember Kilman?
Present.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Present.
Councilmember Roberts?
Present.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Los?
Present. The next item on the agenda is general announcements and proclamations. We have none, so we will move to the next item, which is public comments. The City Council meetings are deliberative sessions by members of the governing body. Civility and decorum are expected and will be required at all times. Public comment is encouraged at all public meetings, but the primary purpose of the meeting is for the council to discuss and determine public policy for the city. Members of the public may address the City Council during the public comments agenda item for only those items that are relevant to city business, such as information about city events, issues that the municipality has the authority to address, previously debated items, and items that the council may consider in the future. The mayor shall strictly restrain comments and questions to matters that are relevant to city business and shall not permit repetitious comments. All other agenda items will also include an opportunity for public comments in accordance with the rules adopted and codified by the City Council. Speakers should wait to be recognized by the mayor before they proceed to the podium and should begin their statement by first stating their name and whether or not they are resident of the city. A speaker who represents an organization or other person must identify the organization or person. Public comments are to be directed to the City Council as a whole and not to individual council members or individual city staff. The City Council and staff are not required to respond to the comments and questions. Speakers may comment up to four minutes per item once per person. No speaker may give their allotted minutes to another person or group. A maximum of thirty minutes will be permitted for public comments and a maximum of twenty minutes per agenda item will be allowed for public comments on all of the items except public hearings. Does anyone want to comment? Sir? Yes, you?
Thank you. I'm a little nervous. I'm a lot nervous, actually. I've never done this before. So, yeah, my name is Bill Lauritsen and I live just outside the city limits in a mobile home park. And what I'd like to do is try to, I'm trying to raise community awareness of the tornado shelter situation here in Carbondale and Jackson County also. I've talked to Orville Wright over with Jackson County Emergency Management about this, had some extensive conversations. And over the summer, I wrote a rather long report of about ten thousand words, looking at analyzing the potential shelters. I know we have one shelter in the basement here, but we have a lot of people in this community. If we were struck by a major tornado, that would be in danger of their lives, basically. Even people with basements are not necessarily safe. The one that hit in Murfreesboro last spring, well, I, I don't know if any of you saw, but I did a opinion piece in the Carbondale Times about this. I don't know if any of you saw, that was about three weeks ago. So what I'd like the council to do is help me, and I don't know the procedure, but have a community-wide meeting in the civic center here with all the stakeholders, the residents, emergency management, to get feedback from the community and maybe develop a plan to get more access to community shelters. Because, as I stated in my opinion piece, which is really a fact piece, it's not just opinion, it's a lot of facts, we have a lot of people at risk. Seven hundred mobile homes in the area, twelve thousand housing units, and according to my figures, fifteen thousand of us in the greater Carbondale area lack a sufficient refuge. So I want to, and there are potential refuges around here, such as at SIU. Although SIU is a state-run university, it's still, they still could cooperate with us. I mean, a lot of their students live off-campus in Carbondale, so I think they could cooperate with us because they have some buildings that are potentially large enough for this type of thing. So anyway, I sent, I think I sent some of you an email of this and I'd be happy to, I have some copies here, actually, if anybody wants one or any of you want one, and I'd be happy to email you the ten thousand word one also, which is, I think, quite detailed and has all my sources. And, let's see, is there anything I forgot? And yeah, so I'd like to ask the City Council to help me or to direct the staff to, to put on the city schedule a, a meeting so all the stakeholders can discuss these issues. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Please do email the, the ten thousand-page document. Let us know what's on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who do I email it to? Everybody?
Everybody. Yeah, while the council. I'm sorry? At, in the next section. Are there other people who wish to comment? Yes, sir.
My name is James Cooper, Jr., Carbondale citizen, under my medical discharge, diagnosed with asthma, mental health disorders, disabled African American veteran. I want to thank anyone, black, white, brown, and others, fighting for everyone's constitutional rights. I have a mixture question or two, pressed by a brief comment or two. What I say as city business, first amendment right, freedom of speech. My speech is well under the four minutes allowed for each citizen to speak. This is an update from the last eighteen City Council meetings. I have received no summons to appear in court from Jackson County Court nor in the rest of me regarding February twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, Carbondale Police report against me, saying I'm breaking the law. I dispute it. For the public, TV audience, and City Council, respectfully, are these the ones, some authorities and officials, the culprits, that have falsified slash concealed the Jackson County Court Doc Sheet in case number ninety-two dash CF dash eighty-five? Guilty. Been denying me full VA disability, although diagnosed by white military VA doctors. Guilty. For years continuously persecuting me and unleashed their goon squads, torturing me. Guilty. This is city business. Carbondale Mayor, Carbondale City Council, the FBI headquarters in Washington DC, the Internal Revenue Service, Jackson County State's Attorney, Marshal Casey O'Hale, Carbondale City Manager, US Attorney for the Southern District of Illinois, Illinois Governor JB Prisker, Carbondale NAACP, Carbondale Police Chief, Carbondale Postmaster Laurie Smith, Jackson County Clerk of the Court, Christian Hill. Carbondale Black Churches and others are being certified mail from Carbondale Post Office for court records and others. My December eighth, two thousand and twenty-five declaration affidavit that I, James Cooper, Jr., am not pleading guilty to any felony. Jackson County State's Attorney, Marshal Casey O'Hale, US Attorney for Southern District of Illinois, Stephen Wineho, both races, and others trying to falsely imprison me for, imprison me for, including tax evasion, to keep hidden the mask cover-up of me being by the Director and Assistant Director, the nineteen ninety-two Jackson County wrongful conviction against me, case number ninety-two CF dash eighty-five, involving prosecutorial misconduct. The file Carbondale Police report against me, complaint number twenty-eighteen oh-one-one-six-three CPD, saying I'm breaking the law. I dispute settlement in court. This is a copy of that affidavit. Also included, my December eighth, two thousand and twenty-five affidavit for the records of the FBI, Carbondale NAACP, all Carbondale Black Churches, Carbondale City Manager, Carbondale Police. The courts and others are copies of Jackson County Doc Sheet entries, case number ninety-two CF dash eighty-five, as follows. Four fifteen, two thousand and twenty-five document entry. My April fifth, two thousand and twenty-five declaration affidavit to Carbondale Police Chief slash City Manager, esteemed federal US District Court for Southern Illinois Judges, Phil Gilbert and David Herndon, both white, US Assistant Attorney Amanda Robinson and others are in on the corruption against me, cover-up me being by the Director and Assistant Director, the Jackson County wrongful conviction against me. End of four twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-five document entry. My April nineteen, two thousand and twenty-five declaration affidavit that, in addition to Carbondale Police Chief slash City Manager, US Assistant Attorney Amanda Robinson, and the two federal judges mentioned, my April fifth, two thousand and twenty-five declaration affidavit, also US District Court for Southern Illinois magistrate Judge Miriam Lee Dolly, in on the corruption against me, cover-up me being by the Director and Assistant Director. This is a copy of those two Doc Sheet entries. As of twelve five, two thousand and twenty-five, my November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five declaration affidavit that various white authorities have unleashed fire Carbondale Black Preachers across multiple churches, pray for them, in on corruption against me, trying to have me falsely imprisoned for any felony, to keep hidden the mask cover-up of me by the Director and Assistant Director. Had not been entered on Doc Sheet entry, any white lady in the all-white clerk's office said she hadn't received copy yet. Question. Respectfully, do some of these authorities say a thrill is on, on, on the throne like King Kong? Let's get it on like Donkey Kong. Settle dispute immediately.
That's time, Mr. Cooper.
Jury trial is on, is on, right? Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to comment? Mr. Harvey?
Mayor, City Manager, Mayor Zani, spelled Z-A-N-I, Hostage, H-O-S-T-A-G-I, Jarris K. Harvey, Carbondale resident. I was just hoping to remind the City Council that this is a non-legal session. There is no mayoral representative, nor voting mayor. You have just fugazi-approved liquor licenses and failed to vote. Since the city ordinances say, City Council votes consist of yea and nay. As well, I would also like to remind you that as of about two-thirty today, November ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, and that would be two-thirty PM, when I had contacted Secretary to the Sitting Mayor and City Manager, Faith Johnson, and left a voicemail, seeking to speak to Mayor Pro Tempur, Adam Los. I had spoken the words that I am the mayor, being the son of Sitting Mayor Carolyn, C-A-R-O-L-I-N, Harvey. So, please do not make yourselves criminals. Do not let a farce. Do not let a farce or fitting in pretend make you a criminal. Because you are voting on city funds that affect city business. This is city money, and when that money is dispensed, you all will be held responsible. Because unless you vote yea or nay, you are robbing the city. Unless there is a sitting, no, a voting mayor or mayoral representative, that is a legal representative, meaning they are a Carbondale resident, have lived within the city for a year, are a man or a woman, you will be committing a crime, since they do not sit. A voting mayor nor a legal mayoral representative does not sit behind that city of Carbondale, Illinois, United States of America diocese. Period. Space, 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 space. Understand? Thank you.
We'll take that under advisement. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Does anyone else wish to comment?
You're welcome. You could also consider that as a tip.
Understood.
My, my.
Is there anyone else who?
My statement is end.
I think that's it, Mr. Harvey. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? No one else? Okay. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Are there any council comments? Ms. Roberts?
Well, I have two things now. One is a reply to Bill who left about the emergency shelter idea. In 2010, I earned my EMT certification, and emergency preparedness has been an interest of mine for most of my life. I appreciate that Bill L., and I didn't get his last name, raised this issue here. We live in a region that is vulnerable to severe snow and ice storms, tornadoes, and other natural disasters, and we've seen those consequences firsthand. It was either last year, I think, two years ago, we had that major snowstorm that left much of Carbondale without power and, in the region. Strengthening community preparedness before an event is incredibly important, and I think that exploring ways to do so is a good step. I look forward to reviewing the materials that he will send us, so I hope he uses this. The only other thing I wanted to say was about the music. When I was younger, I realized that music was one of the fastest ways people form a sense of community, even with total strangers. Way back in the late 80s and early 90s, there was a small venue here on the Strip called 611 Pizza. I'd been away for about a year, and I came back, and one night I wandered into the 611 to catch a show, and immediately I knew I was home. There was a live band playing, there were people moving around, and strangers were greeting each other like they were old friends. This is the Carbondale that I love. It's what I remember, and it's what it still is like here. That moment that I had at 611 Pizza, and honestly, I had any number of times in town, has always stayed with me. It reminded me of how quickly music can turn a roomful of strangers into a community. And that's the spirit we're hoping that these civic sessions can bring to this space. Cities that blend music with civic spaces often do it because even a short moment of live music can change how a space feels and how people relate to each other. So tonight, I want to thank all of the staff who helped launch our first civic sessions performance, with a special thank you to our Public Relations Officer, Eva Fisher, who spent a lot of time for her coordination and creativity that she brought in bringing this to life. It was lovely hearing Williams, and I'll probably mangle his last name, Sernotas, cello, and Vincent Jones contra-bass resonating through City Hall tonight. I am looking forward to seeing this series grow. It is a simple but meaningful way to highlight our local musicians and hopefully deepen the sense of connection between residents and their city government. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kilman?
Business owners downtown and on the Strip are concerned about dust and debris blowing off of construction sites and onto sidewalks and adjacent properties, affecting patrons, passersby, and workers in the downtown area. Additionally, a lack of screens along fences gives the public access to a less-than-stellar view while our buildings are being built. I personally enjoy seeing how the proverbial cake is baked, but council has received some complaints. I'd like to bring this to staff and other council members' attention as something of note and concern in the business community.
There will be some covering for the fence that'll be going up hopefully as soon as this week.
Anything from Ms. Maxwell? Ms. Maxwell? Over here? Mr. Columbo?
First, I'd like to start by saying, as this is our last meeting for the year, thank you to staff, to my fellow council members, and to the general public for making this first partial year on council, one that I felt very comfortable getting into this role and, and engaging in the process of producing policy and building a better Carbondale. Just prior to coming to council this evening, as I mulled over thoughts in my head, I thought, what are some things that, that, you know, were, were in the top of my mind, but had not yet really gotten to a point of discussion or, or broader momentum as the year closes out? And so I just wanted to publicly talk about four items that I would like to engage with my fellow council members, any one person up here that would be willing to come along on any one particular item, and call it a Christmas list, because it's the holiday season. Downtown environmental changes, you know, with the success that we've had of, you know, addressing some less-than-favorable activity around the town square with some small environmental changes downtown, I think we've got an opportunity to broaden that perspective throughout the downtown area, from one end of the Strip to the other, all the way around, all the way around the town square. And thank you to Carbondale Main Street for these being on our desk this evening and for all the work that you folks are already doing around that item. So would like to find one other council member to, to help bring about, you know, that discussion item when we've got kind of a, a longer list of wants and asks from our various folks that engage in downtown, from business owners to patrons and just folks that travel through. Downtown parking. I haven't pushed this issue yet too heavily, but I think we do have some kind of taste on council for addressing our paid parking systems downtown. I was just in Cape Girardeau this morning where they have, you know, two-hour complimentary parking all throughout their downtown area, and I just thought, wow, man, it would be really, really great if we had some of that welcoming aspect to our downtown here. I'm not saying that we need to do completely away with traffic control and parking control. Obviously, there's a lot of different aspects that go into, you know, what our downtown parking situation looks like, from the train station to City Hall, and the various businesses, but I think we do have some taste for, for moving parking activity forward. Additionally, you know, broadening kind of what, what we're doing to engage and support our homeless community here in Carbondale based off the asks that they have made of us over the past several months, that folks have been attending council and making very specific concrete asks of us. Over the past couple of months, I've had an opportunity to, to share with some staff and fellow council members an action plan around that, and I would welcome another person to come along on that and, and help move that to discussion. And then lastly, an item that has just in, in the past couple of weeks started to reemerge in, in my purview, which is the, the camera issue and just broader issue of, you know, data sharing through these systems that we, that we have. You know, I'm not sitting here saying, hey, we should just outright get rid of all of the cameras. I understand that is an essential tool for our police department to actually address, you know, crime in the city. But over the past couple of weeks, I've seen, you know, various media around Flocks and other, other businesses, systems that has been concerning. And one of the things that really has stuck with me was actually hearing the CEO of Flock speak about folks who are against the deployment of his camera systems, and specifically calling them terrorists, right? And that type of language from a CEO of a company who we employ the systems of in this municipality is concerning to me. So again, I'm not looking for any one specific action item on any of these, other than finding fellow council members that are willing to come along and, and bring these items for discussion and find a path forward to make good policy around them that enriches the lives of everybody in Carbondale.
Thank you. Anything from Mr. Stanfield? No? Okay. Then that brings us to the next item, which is public hearings and special reports. There are none, so we are now at the consent agenda.
Item 6.1 is the approval of the minutes from the regular city council meeting of November 18, 2025. Item 6.2 is approval of warrant number 1524 for period ending 11/7/2025. Item 6.3 is approval of warrant number 1525 for period ending 11/21/2025. Item 6.4 is approval of Wells Fargo warrant for the period ending 10/31/25 for FY26 in the amount of $222,138.07. Item 6.5 is award of a contract for Cedar Lake Trail Systems Development, System Development to Piney Creek Construction and Repair of Ava, Illinois, in the amount of $49,898. Item 6.6 is award of a contract for stormwater pump station rehabilitation to Cordy and Lootjohun Construction of Highland, Illinois, in the amount of $296,300. Item 6.7 is adoption of a resolution authorizing staff to initiate a text amendment relative to minimum surfacing standards in all R1 low-density residential districts and all rural residential districts.
Thank you. Before we take that up, let me go backward for just a moment. I was supposed to announce that there is a technical issue with our broadcast tonight, so we're not broadcasting, but the video will be up on the city's website in the normal place tomorrow. But back to the consent agenda, is there anything that anyone wants to ask a quick question about without pulling the item? Is there anything anyone wants to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Stanfield?
I'm curious. I'm sorry, I'm still trying to figure out the, I'm trying to figure out this.
Take your time.
Portal system. Okay, come on now. Okay. Consent agenda, item 6.7 about the rewording. I'm curious about what that, what that text amendment might look like.
It's a text amendment to go to the Planning Commission to discuss allowing residential driveways in residential areas, some of which already exist, and then new, offering the opportunity to have gravel driveways within specifications in those areas.
So it'd be kind of opening up the, the possibility for gravel driveways or? Okay.
As long as they meet the minimum standards, yes.
Anything else? Is there a motion? Ms. Kilman?
I move that we approve all agenda items, consent agenda items not pulled for separate consideration.
Is there a second? Mr. Columbo?
Second.
Are there any comments from the public on the consent agenda items? Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Columbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Los?
Yes. The next item is general business, and the first item is an ordinance approving and a resolution denying rezoning property at 441 East Willow Street from R15 low-density residential to R3 high-density residential.
Elizabeth Erin Ashley on behalf of the Irma Hayes Center is requesting the rezoning of property at 441 East Willow Street from R15 low-density residential to R3 high-density residential to apply for a special use permit for a community center operation. A rezoning is necessary because community centers are not in allowed use in R15 districts. Rezoning the property is necessary for the city council to consider the special use permit and will bring the Irma Hayes Center into conformance with the Title 15 of the Carbondale Revised Code. The code was heard by, excuse me, the case was heard by the Planning Commission on November 19, 2025. During the hearing for PC 26-07, no one spoke in favor of or in opposition to the proposed rezoning. The Planning Commission recommended approval of PC 26-07. Attached in this item are, for city council review, are the following: An ordinance approving and a resolution denying the rezoning request with Exhibit A, a map of the location; Two, a staff report for PC 26-07 with attached information; and Three, a memo to the council from city staff.
Is there a motion on this item?
I'm sorry, the recommended action is to adopt an ordinance rezoning property at 441 East Willow Street from R15 low-density residential to R3 high-density residential.
Do we have a motion? Ms. Kilman?
I move that we approve a resolution. I move that we adopt an ordinance approving a resolution to rezone property at 441 East Willow Street from R15 low-density residential to R3 high-density residential.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Roberts?
A second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this item? Ms. Roberts?
It's my understanding that she wants to open a small grocery-type store in that location, and I think that would be incredibly beneficial to that neighborhood and that area.
Thank you. Any other comments from this side? Over here? Mr. Stanfield?
I would like to echo Ms. Roberts' comments that this is the sort of solution in, in a small community where some private initiative can fill the gaps of a lot of things that the city can't take care of. And having a, a space like Irma Hayes Center taking on a, a small grocery business is, it's just an excellent solution that I think could be a model for a lot of other improvements around town. The key being that it has to be privately, a private initiative, right? It's something that we shouldn't count on city council to, to take care of. And, and so I just wanted to kind of point out that this is exactly the kind of thing that we've been talking about in the community over the course of the year.
Thank you. I agree. I'm excited that there will be a neighborhood grocery store again, and we'll see, I hope it works out. Is there anyone from the public who wants to comment on this item? Seeing no one, I'll recall the roll, please.
Councilmember Columbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Los?
Yes. That passes. The next item is ordinances abating the 2025 tax levies for general obligation bonds.
On June 9th, 2020, city council adopted ordinance number 2020-19, which provided for the issuance of $6,850,000 general obligation refunding bonds that refunded the 2010 A Series general obligation bonds and the Series 2011 general obligation bonds. The 2010 A Series bonds were issued by ordinance number 2010-25, which provided funding for the construction of the Public Safety Center. The 2011 Series general obligation bonds were issued by ordinance number 2011-51, adopted on October 4, 2011, for the refunding of, of 2004 Series general obligation bonds in the amount of $3,825,000, originally issued to fund the construction of the Civic Center City Hall and to fund the construction of a, of a new Fire Station 2 in the amount of $2,800,000. The bond ordinance number 2020-19 refunded both the Series 2010 A bonds and the Series 2011 bonds and provided for the debt service on the 2028 Series general obligation bonds to be paid by a direct annual property tax levy. The proposed ordinance abates the 2025 tax levy for the entire required debt service amount of $540,300. The abated levy funds will be replaced with general revenues from the city's general Ordinance abating the 2025 tax levy for the 2022 Series taxable general obligation bonds. On January 25, 2022, the city council adopted ordinance number 2022-04, which provided for the issuance of $40,585,000 taxable general obligation bonds, which were utilized to increase the funding level of the Carbondale Fire and Police Pension Plans to 100%. The bond ordinance number 2022-04 provided for the debt service of the 2022 Series taxable general obligation bonds to be paid by a direct annual property tax levy. The proposed ordinance abates the 2025 tax- The proposed ordinance abates the twenty-twenty-five tax levy for the entire required debt service in the amount of three million, eighty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. The abated levy funds will be replaced with general revenues of the city's general fund and half of the food and beverage tax revenues from the Packaged Liquor and Food and Beverage Tax Fund. The recommended action is to approve the ordinances abating the twenty-twenty-five debt service tax levies for the twenty-twenty-A and the twenty-twenty-two general obligation bonds.
Is there a motion? Ms. Kilman?
I move that we approve the ordinance as abating the twenty-twenty-five debt service tax levies for the twenty-twenty-A and the twenty-twenty-two general obligation bonds.
Is there a second? Mr. Columbo?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Does anyone from the audience wish to comment or ask questions on this item? Seeing no one, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Columbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Los?
Yes. That passes. The next item is an ordinance adopting the twenty-twenty-five property tax levy.
City council reviewed the recommended twenty-twenty-five tax levy at the November eighteen, twenty twenty-five council meeting for the Truth and Taxation Act's determination. The twenty-twenty-five tax levy provides the revenues for the city's fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven, which runs from May one, twenty twenty-six through April thirty, twenty twenty-seven. The property tax levy for twenty-twenty-four was one million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars for public safety pensions, two hundred and three thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars for street lighting, and three million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars for debt service for the two thousand and eleven, twenty-twenty-A and the twenty-twenty-two series obligation bonds. This levy was partially abated, resulting in a net one million, thirty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars for public safety pension levy extension. For twenty-twenty-five, the staff submitted a recommended tax levy, less abatements of one million, thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for partial funding of public safety pensions, an increase of thirty-four dollars or zero percent over the extended twenty-twenty-four levy for the extended tax, taxes received this year. Following discussion at the November eighteen, twenty twenty-five council meeting, city staff has prepared the recommended twenty-twenty-five levy with an amount equal to zero percent increase. Therefore, for twenty-twenty-five, the tax levy, less abatements of one million, thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for the partial funding of public safety pensions, is presented with an increase of thirty-four dollars or zero percent above the twenty-twenty-four levy for the extended taxes received this year. As in prior years, the required levy amounts of three million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars for debt service of the obligation bonds are two hundred and three thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars for street lighting are abated. The public library tax levy, as submitted by Library Board of Trustees, amounts to one million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seventy-one dollars for general operating purposes. This is fifty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollar increase over the prior year's extended levy of one million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars or four point two-five percent. In accordance with state law, the city council must adopt the tax levy approved by the Library Board. The total municipal property tax levy, consisting of city government purposes levy and the library purposes levy, is two million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. The recommended action is to approve an ordinance adopting the twenty-twenty-five tax levy in the amount of two million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars, one million, thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for city purposes, one million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seventy-one dollars for library general operating purposes.
Is there a motion? Ms. Kilman?
I move that we approve an ordinance adopting the twenty-twenty-five tax levy in the amount of two million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Is there a second? Mr. Stanfield?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Would anyone from the public like to comment or have questions answered on this item? Seeing no one, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Columbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Los?
Yes. The next item is an ordinance establishing the twenty-twenty-five tax levy for the downtown special services area number one.
The city council adopted ordinance number two thousand and one dash forty-two on October second, two thousand and one, which authorized the extension and expansion of the downtown special service area number one in the city of Carbonell, Illinois. The ordinance extended for another five years in the special service area, which was established by the city council's adoption of ordinance number nine, six dash twenty-five on March nineteen, nineteen ninety-six. Additionally, it expanded the boundaries by adding several properties on North Illinois Avenue. Also, the ordinance reduced the maximum tax levy rate from point five six per one hundred dollars of equalized assessed valuation, as was set out at the time the downtown special service area was established, to point five four per one hundred dollars of equalized assessed valuation, and set a sunset provision for the SSA to cease on December thirty-first, two thousand and seven. On July eighteen, two thousand and six, the city council again authorized an extension and expansion of the downtown special service area number one. With the adoption of ordinance number two thousand and six dash forty-five, the downtown special service area number one was extended for another five years, and its boundaries were expanded by adding properties on East Main Street. Also, the maximum tax levy rate was reduced from point five four per one hundred to point four eight per one hundred of equalized assessed valuation. On November thirteenth, two thousand and twelve, the city council again authorized an extension of the downtown special area, or special service area number one. With the adoption of ordinance number two thousand and twelve dash five, two, the downtown special service area number one was extended for another five years. The maximum tax levy rate was left at point four eight per one hundred dollars of equalized assessed valuation. On November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, the city council again authorized an extension of the downtown special service area number one. With the adoption of ordinance number two thousand and seventeen dash forty-six, the downtown special service area number one was extended for another five years. The maximum tax levy rate was left at point four eight per one hundred dollars of equalized assessed valuation. On December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, the city council again authorized an extension of the downtown special service area number one. With the adoption of ordinance number two thousand and twenty-two dash forty-one, the downtown special service area number one was extended for another five years. The maximum tax levy rate was increased to point five six per one hundred dollars of equalized assessed valuation. The special service area number one tax levy ordinance provides for the recommended amount of fifty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-five cents to be levied on the properties within the boundaries identified by the ordinance. This is an increase of one thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-two cents or three percent of the amount levied in the previous year. The recommended action is that the city council approve an ordinance establishing the twenty-twenty-five tax levy for downtown special service area number one in the amount of fifty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-five cents.
Is there a motion? Ms. Kilman?
I move that we approve the ordinance adopting the twenty-twenty-four tax levy in the amount of fifty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-five cents for the downtown special service area number one.
Is there a second? Ms. Roberts?
A second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Is there anyone in the public who wants to comment or ask questions about this item? Seeing no one, will the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Columbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Los?
Yes. The next item is an ordinance approving and a resolution denying the rezoning of property at twenty-twenty South Illinois Avenue from R three high-density residential to SB Secondary Business.
Catherine Walker, project manager for Hubbard Enterprises, on behalf of Westwood Rentals LLC, has requested the rezoning of property at twenty-twenty South Illinois Avenue from R three high-density residential to SB Secondary Business in order for the property to be developed as a retail store with some groceries. The planning commission heard this case at the November nineteen, twenty twenty-five meeting and voted unanimously seven, zero, to recommend the approval of the rezoning. Attached to this item for council review are a staff report with attachments, an ordinance approving PC two six dash zero four, and a resolution denying PC two six dash zero four. The recommended action is to adopt an ordinance rezoning property at twenty-twenty South Illinois Avenue from R three to SB.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Mr. Columbo?
We adopt an ordinance approving the rezoning of property at twenty-twenty South Illinois Avenue from R three high-density residential to SB Secondary Business.
Is there a second?
Well, I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Is there any discussion on this item? Ms. Roberts?
This is another one of those things that fill a gap. It's another grocery store that's filling a gap on the south end of town in an area that doesn't have easy access to grocery store at all. So I'm glad that we have this in front of us today.
Anyone else? Anyone over here? Well, I'll comment. I'm happy to see this happening, but this is another example of one of my favorite things to talk about or complain about, which is the unwieldiness and craziness of our zoning code. It's not apparent necessarily on the face of the zoning code. Where it really gets interesting is when you find the table of uses. And so, one, there are many different zones, like many different zones. We don't just have a commercial zone, we have a lot of commercial zones. And what you'll find is that, my favorite example is that in some of those zones, you can sell watches, but you cannot repair watches. In other districts, you can repair watches, but you cannot sell them. And in still other districts, you can both repair and sell watches. I'm not sure why we care. It makes no sense to me. And I think it, it is an obstacle to people developing, more so than we think, because this is not a big city with a, a large class of sophisticated developers who expect to make buckets full of money that they can use to pay the lawyers that they need to figure all this stuff out. And what's more is that our neighboring communities don't have these complex codes. So what I would like to see is a much, much simpler zoning code. This is R three high-density residential. I can't think of a better place where you would put a neighborhood grocery store. I mean, that's, that's the type of place where it's most likely to survive. So that's something we should do in the future, but that's not for today. Is there anyone in the public who wants to comment on this item? All right. Seeing no one, will the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Columbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Los?
Yes. All right. The next item is the final selection of the firm to develop and initiate the city's strategic marketing plan and a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars with the firm selected by council.
The city of Carbonell issued a request for proposals, RFP, on August eleventh, twenty twenty-five, for the development of a destination and brand marketing strategy, strategy for Carbonell's economic growth. The goal of this project is to strengthen Carbonell's identity, promote tourism, attract investment in new residents, and enhance community pride through a unified, research-based marketing strategy. A total of sixty-eight proposals were received. After a detailed review and scoring process, the following three firms received the highest combined scores and were identified as finalists. Altogether slash Kick Push received a combined score of one eighty, Zo Agency a combined score of one sixty-eight, Dovetail a combined score of one sixty-seven. Representatives from each firm presented their proposals to the city council on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the city council held an initial discussion following the presentations and deferred final selection to this meeting December ninth, twenty twenty-five to allow time for further review. The project is supported by the Energy Transition Community Grant, ETCG, which awarded the city ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and four cents toward the one hundred and twenty thousand project budget. All grant funds must be expended by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and the selected firm will be expected to complete the plan and initiate its rollout within this timeframe. The evaluation materials provided to council include the executive summary and RFP, RFP overview, staff evaluation summaries, proposed summaries, full finalist proposals, and the scoring rubric. A resolution authorizing execution of the agreement is included with this agenda item. The recommended action. City council is asked to, one, select one of the three finalist firms to develop and initiate the city's strategic marketing plan, and, two, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars with the firm selected by council.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure? We could talk about the three firms first and then ask for a motion, or we could ask for a motion and then discuss it. What, what are your thoughts?
Can we start with a show of hands and see if maybe we can avoid the need for an ongoing discussion?
Taking the temperature? Yeah, okay. Anyone down here have thoughts on this?
I had very strong opinions at the last meeting. You wound up leaving before they were iterated. I don't know if you went up, going back?
That's right. I had enjoyed as much of that as I could stand.
I can understand why. And my comments were very lengthy. I had very strong opinions. Sorry to have subjected everyone else to those, but there were a lot of reasons why I made the choices that I made, or that it came to the sorts of decisions that I made. And if compelled, I would re-articulate those for you all, the public, in a condensed version. I would also like to avoid a lengthy discussion if we can.
Sure. We've got a lot on the agenda. Does anybody object to a quick show of hands? Okay. Well, we'll do that first, and that's not a formal vote, obviously, and then we'll have what discussion we need after we get a motion. Who favors the first group, which is Altogether slash Kick Push? Any hands for them? None? Okay. Who favors the second one, Zo Agency? Okay. We have four. That's a majority right there. And who favors Dovetail? Me. I favor Dovetail. Okay. Can we get a motion? Ms. Roberts?
I motion that we vote on item seven point six, final selection of the firm to develop and initiate the city's strategic marketing plan and a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement in the amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars with the firm selected by council.
And to be clear, that firm is?
And that firm is Zoe Agency.
Zoe Agency. All right. Is there a second? Mr. Columbo?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this item? Abbreviated or extended?
No, I made all my comments in the last one. Thanks for touching on it.
Ms. Roberts?
I'll make this short. I've said before that I'm not generally a fan of hiring consultants, and I've often, at least personally and, and out loud to friends, advocated for the use of local talented resources that we have here. But with the three firms that we reviewed, I found myself wanting a team that understands Carbonell while also bringing a broader, more aspirational perspective. For me, Zo Agency strikes that balance. They have a connection, a direct connection to our community. They actually sent somebody here, which was impressive and what should have happened. But they also bring national experience and an outside view that can help Carbonell think bigger, as well, I think that they're, we're more like Bend than we are like St. Louis. I, I really think that we have so much to offer here in Carbonell and our region. So that's why I am recommending Zo Agency.
All right. Anyone else wish to comment? Mr. Stanfield?
Okay. So this is just one more example of why Ms. Roberts and I are such good friends, because she basically said everything I wanted to say. I, I, I really just love consultant firms just in general. The move that we tend to take now is to throw a lot of money at someone else to try and rebrand or explain something that we all can do locally ourselves. But the interview process, even though it was quite long, showed us that all three of these businesses were just really attentive, really energetic. The interview process was, I found, actually quite interesting. Went a little long, but I, I, I found it very interesting. But the fact that Zo sent somebody here to be personally accountable, that matters, especially in, in this era where, like, faceless consultants seem to be running things. And, and having somebody present who was connected to the community and who was willing to actually field quest- field questions and be accountable, that matters. And that's the kind of business I want to do business with. I just want to put that in the record.
Thank you. Mr. Columbo?
I would like to start by thanking councilmembers Kilman, Maxwell, and Roberts for making very good arguments for Zo at the last meeting and establishing why they were the right pick for the agency. I don't know that I necessarily had strong opinions, other than when we do hire them, that I tend to hold their feet to the fire on this, because the last time that we did anything related to a big marketing program, it did not go well. And I intend to ensure alongside staff and anybody else that comes into this process that we do have a sufficient marketing program that comes out of this for whatever we intend for it to, you know, touch on for the city. And I'm looking forward to a good outcome on this.
Thank you. Well, I'll comment extremely briefly. I favored Zo at the beginning because they actually sent someone here, and they are the only one of the three agencies that did. But by the end of it, after seeing the presentations, I favored Dovetail. The reason being, they had the courage and willingness to lean into the grit of Carbondale. And that is something that, whether we like it or not, is a perception around the area. Quite honestly, I think it's true. And, you know, one of my favorite things to joke about is every time there's a tornado and it's going to come and hit Carbondale, I always say to people, no, it's not going to happen. And it never does. And I say, why do you think tornadoes don't hit Carbondale? And I say, because Carbondale's a tough town. Even the tornadoes are scared to come here. They're afraid they'll get hurt. So I think we should lean into that. You know, we're all tough people. We've seen that recently in some of our meetings. So I prefer that, but that is okay. We can always ask Zo to lean into that a bit. Are there any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Out of curiosity, did you guys reach out to any actual local marketing agencies within the area of Southern Illinois to promote Carbondale before making your decision to go with Zo Agency that's based out of Bend, Oregon?
I think we've got Mr. Mitchell, who's given me the sign that we did.
We did.
And he can provide you with more information on that. He looks like he's going to step up to the mic.
While he's on his way up here. We did put out a request for proposals that went out locally and nationally. And we made sure that our local talent here had that information and had the opportunity to present their proposals, if that's what they desired to do.
Okay.
Sir, my apologies. Before you leave the microphone, I am, this is not my normal role, and I forgot to ask you to say your name.
My name is Eric Sparks.
Eric Sparks, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anyone else have comments or questions? Yes, ma'am? I know you told us your name earlier, but you have to say it again on each item.
My name is Alva Prince. I was agreeing with you. Like, just because that person showed up, I still didn't feel, I think he just told y'all what y'all wanted to hear because he was there. But the information that was read, like you said, it fit Carbondale more, but I'm not a voting party on it. But I'm hoping, like you said, you're going to make sure that they do what they're supposed to be doing. So that means you're going to work side by side with them? Okay. All right.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, will the clerk call the roll?
Hate to do this. Where is this? Give me a little patience here. We lost our motion. I know you moved. Yes.
It was a motion?
Could I catch the second?
The second was by Mr. Columbo, I believe. Is that correct? Stanfield? Who wants it? We'll decide right now who did it. Mr. Stanfield gave us the second.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Councilmember Columbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Loves?
Yes, against my better judgment. That is adopted, and we will move on to the next item. And that is a resolution approving and a resolution denying a special use permit to Elizabeth Erin Ashley for a community center operation in an R3 High Density Residential zoning district at 441 East Willow Street.
Applicant Elizabeth Erin Ashley, on behalf of the Irma Hayes Center, submitted an application requesting a special use permit for a community center operation at 441 East Willow Street. Specifically, the request is to operate a small grocery store within the Irma Hayes Center. The project is supported by the Irma Hayes Director and Board of Directors. The property is currently zoned R15 Low Density Residential. Community centers are not allowed within this zoning district. It is allowed with a special use permit in the R3 district. The applicant filed a rezoning application to rezone the property from R15 Low Density Residential to R3 High Density Residential. The rezoning request must be approved by the city council in order for the special use permit to be granted. The rezoning will be considered by the city council as a separate item on the agenda. Attached to this item for the city council review are the following: a resolution approving and a resolution denying the request for a special use permit to Elizabeth Erin Ashley for a community center operation at 441 East Willow Street in property zone R3. A staff report for PC 26008 with the attachments, and a memo to city council from staff. Recommended action. The recommended action is to adopt a resolution approving a special use permit to Elizabeth Erin Ashley for a community center operation at 441 East Willow Street.
Is there a motion? Mr. Columbo?
I move that we adopt a resolution approving a special use permit to allow for a community center operation on property zone R3 High Density Residential.
Is there a second? Ms. Kilman?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this item? We'll start over here. No? Ms. Kilman?
I'm very thankful for all of Erin's work on this. Seeing it come to fruition is really cool, so a big thumbs up for me.
Anyone else over here? Over this way. Well, I'll once again talk about zoning, because this is fun for me. I also don't like special use permits because they're too arbitrary, and you don't know whether you're going to get one or not. And by the time you get to the point where you're asking for one and you get to find out whether you're going to get one or not, you've already put money into the project. Maybe it doesn't happen. What would be better would be conditional uses rather than special uses, so that you know what you can do if you meet the conditions that have been figured out in advance. But I'm not going to let that stop me. I'll vote for this anyway. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to comment? Ms. Lutecky?
Sandy Lutecky, Chair of the Planning Commission. I'm going to speak for special use permits, because the one thing it does, it gives the neighbors an outlet to speak about it and to give their opinion. And that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lutecky. That is the best argument for them. Does anyone else wish to comment? Mr. Harvey?
Mayor, City Manager, Mayor Sane Hostagirusk Harvey Zani-Hostagi-Jairusk Harvey. Whether this is a special use permit or not, just as all the agenda items, you know, if I had have been recognized priorly, I would have spoken again and tried to save you all from criminality. But nevertheless, I guess it wouldn't be proper for you all to mislead individuals seeking special use permits, because due to the failure of a legitimate voting mayor being here, as well as a legitimate mayor representative, because the act of mayor spirit does not make you the mayor. You have to be a man or a woman, meaning that you have gone a year and a day without crime or sin and live in the city of Carbondale for one year. But nevertheless, I think it's kind of malicious and deceptive to vote on something, and then later on, they'll be issued a valid seeming non-legitimate permit. And despite, you know, you all saying, oh, yes, we voted, we said yes a bunch of times, we didn't actually say yay or nay, so that's not a valid vote. And also, you-
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. These are repetitious comments. We're not going to continue down this. You do have time, but I'm ruling your comments out of order. We've done this three times already. We understand your position. Thank you. We're going to move on to the next thing. Thank you. That's what the gavel is for. That's how you control the meeting. It's not to just gavel it in and out. It's to make sure that order is maintained. And so that's why we have it. That's why we use it. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one, will the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Columbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Loves?
Yes. That passes. The next item is an ordinance amending Title V by adding Chapter 19 of the Carbondale Revised Code, creating a license for massage establishments.
Across the United States, an estimated 7,500 to 9,000 illicit massage businesses operate as fronts for one of the most pervasive forms of human traffic, sex trafficking today. These establishments are not isolated criminal enterprises. They form sophisticated, transnational networks that exploit vulnerable women and generate billions of dollars in illegal revenue. Research shows that IMBs represent the second most prevalent form of human trafficking, with 2,949 documented cases, all while hiding behind the facade of legitimate massage services. These types of criminal investigations have taken place in the city of Carbondale, resulting in arrests for varying criminal offenses. Law enforcement agencies nationwide face significant challenges in identifying and dismantling these operations. A typical IMB network consists of two to three locations, each averaging $250,000 in annual revenue, enabling owners to earn over half a million dollars per year. These businesses often span multiple jurisdictions and maintain an outward appearance of legitimacy, complicating investigations. Building cases against IMBs is especially difficult. Victims frequently fear cooperating with authorities due to immigration concerns, coercion, and trauma, and the criminal networks themselves are adept to evading detection. As a result, prosecutions are resource-intensive, allowing many IMBs to continue operating with limited accountability. Municipal licensing of massage establishments is one of the most effective tools available to local governments to combat this problem. A licensing framework provides a city with direct oversight, including the ability to verify legitimate ownership, ensure lawful business practices, inspect facilities, and enforce standards that expose and disrupt illicit operations. By requiring compliance with documented regulations and allowing for suspension or revocation of licenses, licensing empowers a city to identify, monitor, and root out IMBs before they can become entrenched in the community. There are specific exceptions to the licensing for facilities that provide medical-based physical therapy, massages part of chiropractic treatment, and state-registered athletic trainers. The recommended action. The recommended action is to adopt an ordinance amending Title V by adding Chapter 19 to the Carbondale Revised Code, creating a license for massage establishments.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Ms. Kilman?
I move that we adopt an ordinance amending Title V by adding Chapter 19 to the Carbondale Revised Code, creating a license for massage establishments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Is there discussion on this item? Mr. Stanfield?
Yeah, I was curious what this licensing process is going to look like, because I actually do go to one of the medically-approved, you know, massage people. And how is that going to be distinguished, and what the application process is going to look like on that?
I stated there's specific exceptions for medically-approved facilities and operations. Otherwise, the licensing process will go through the clerk's office, much like we do liquor license, other licensed establishments. There will be a review process and ultimately a decision to approve or deny an application.
Is that going to be a fee for that license?
Yes, there's a fee schedule that's laid out in the proposed ordinance.
I don't remember. So a lot of the legitimate businesses, I'll put it that way, are home-based, small-scale, and I worry that a fee for a license might be prohibitive, you know, to their business. And that's only, I'll put that out as a concern, because I know the person I go to in particular works out of her home. And so that's the type of thing that I would not like her business to get caught in a crossfire, because we're trying to crack down on the, you know, the wrongdoers.
Sure. And the licensing fee schedule is subject to the pleasure of the council. However, we would recommend to staff that there be some type of fee associated with it, but we are not stuck on a specific amount.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Mr. Columbo?
I hope this is, let me back up for a second. It seems that neighboring communities who have had similar issues to this have almost used this as a, you know, wave of a magic wand, that then ceases the operation of, you know, illicit establishments. And I surely hope that this is what occurs for Carbondale. I was not as aware of the issues with these establishments until our Chamber of Commerce Director, William Lowe, actually shared with me his interactions and engagements in observing, you know, different activity around some of these establishments, and the concern that he raised to, you know, I don't know if it was the police department or, you know, other investigative agencies or what have you. So I'm just, I'm very appreciative of staff of bringing this forward and getting this addressed. And I would also, you know, back up Mr. Stanfield's statement here. You know, I would be more than in favor of making this a, you know, a zero-dollar licensing item, because, you know, we're trying to use this to control a very specific illegal activity that ultimately is just very, is described by the city manager in background here, something that's very difficult to control through criminal investigation. So I would be in favor of, you know, supporting a motion to make this a zero-dollar license.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Ms. Roberts?
In 1995, I completed an extensive massage therapy program in California and worked in the profession for many years, including operating my own business in Phoenix, Arizona. That experience gives me a strong understanding of what legitimate ethical massage therapy should look like. Most massage therapists practice and operate with professionalism and integrity, and they do deserve a regulatory structure that clearly distinguishes legitimate practice from businesses that are operating under false pretenses. The ordinance before us makes that distinction. It reflects what many cities across the country have had to confront. Illicit massage businesses are one of the most common commercial venues for sex trafficking in the United States. According to National Hotline and anti-trafficking data, yet they are extremely difficult for law enforcement to investigate and prosecute. Our ordinance explicitly notes that there are nearly 3,000 documented cases nationwide, that victims often cannot- that victims often cannot safely cooperate because of coercion, immigration fears, trauma, and more reasons, and that businesses are structured specifically to evade detection. Given these realities, relying solely on police stings is neither effective nor sustainable. A licensing system, on the other hand, gives the city the preventative tools that we lack. It allows us to verify state licensure, review ownership, ensure building, and safely compliance, restrict hours, prohibit various occupancy, and suspend or revoke license if a business refuses inspection or engages in unlawful conduct. This framework reflects established professional standards and equips the city to better identify and address illegitimate operations. For illicit operations, however, these requirements make it much harder to hide behind a facade of legitimacy. This ordinance protects workers, consumers, and the broader community, and I appreciate the work staff and our legal team put into crafting something thorough, and I support moving it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, see, Ms. Kilman has comments?
So, human trafficking can be misapplied as a moniker, as a state-centric concept that relies on borders imposed that inhibit what would otherwise just be the free movement of bodies. And those borders are what opens the door for the exploitation of people, vulnerable people, people from countries where they're trying to escape famine or war, or otherwise they are oppressed or poverty due to global systems, um, into horrifying situations here. It's like they're leaving a horrifying situation, maybe they'll, they'll pay someone to get them across the border, and that person will turn them over into a situation that is just as exploitative, just as horrifying. And we should all work to dismantle systems that create either the necessity or the predatory opportunity of moving bodies across those borders. It's especially important that we pass this ordinance to protect vulnerable women, many of whom operate legitimate establishments or have, like, legitimate services that they provide, that are still dealing with rampant misogyny and sexual service expectations in environment where they are alone, environments where they're alone with their clients. All of the promulgation coming from disreputable and exploitative violations of human dignity that are so rampant in this industry.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Okay. Uh, well, I've got a little to say on this, uh, and I, I will keep it to just a little. I agree with the bulk of what's been said here. I do think we should, uh, license these establishments. But I think Mr. Stanfield had it right on, uh, the licensing fee. I understand the need for licensing fee, and I think that's worth keeping. The reason being that, uh, that provides an independent reason why you might revoke a license. And I understand also the reason to have, uh, the way this is set up, there would be a hundred-dollar licensing fee per establishment, but then you would also pay a licensing fee for each massage therapist who works there. The place where I've gotten legitimate massages, uh, in the past, and it's legitimate, when you go there for the first time, uh, they say, have you ever been here before? And you say, no. And they say, well, here, read this. And they give you this little thing to read that tells you what conduct is expected and what conduct will get the police called. And you've got to sign a little document saying you won't behave like that. So, it's, you know, it's a legit place. And I don't know how many people they've got working out of there, seven or eight? And so, you know, there's another hundred per person. Is that going to break this outfit? Probably not. Uh, you know, they'll probably be fine, but at the same time, I don't see, I would be upset if, uh, someone dinged me for a thousand bucks because somebody else is pretending to be in my industry and being shady about it. So, what I think we should do, and, uh, you know, just procedurally, I can't make a motion while I'm chairing the meeting. If I could make a motion, I would, uh, offer a friendly amendment to change the fee structure to $25 per establishment and $5 per therapist, which accomplishes the same thing, uh, but is a nominal amount, uh, that's less burdensome to people who are trying to do the right thing.
Uh, who was my second?
Who was the second?
Would you agree to that friendly amendment?
So, shall I offer a friendly amendment?
No, no, no. His, his friendly amendment is sufficient. We just both have to agree.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right. You've got your friendly amendment.
All right, well, uh, is there someone for procedural reasons? Is there someone who would like to make that amendment? Perhaps, uh, Mr. Stanfield?
I'm not entirely confident that I could word it correctly.
Uh, I, the way I would word it, if I were able to make a, uh, offer a friendly amendment, is that I would, uh, offer an amendment that amends the fee schedule to $25 per establishment and $5 per therapist at the establishment.
Okay, so, um, I move that we, uh, amend this, uh, ordinance to, as it stands, to a $25, uh, application fee with a $5 extension per, per massage therapist.
Thank you, Mr. Stanfield. Is that amendment acceptable to the people who made the motion and seconded it?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from Ms... I see our parliamentarian here is correcting me on my grievous errors.
Let's see if this works. I think what you're saying is not the application fee, but the license fee.
That's exactly what I'm, uh, a little confused about. I hadn't seen the document with the, the fee structure, because I'm still trying to figure out this, this new, you know, system. And so, I, I'm caught a little bit with my, well, uh, unprepared. Sorry, that almost really went backwards. And so, um, I, I'm still trying to wrap my head around exactly what we're looking at here.
Well, Jamie, does it need to be restated? Can he just accept that commentary as long as Ms. Sorrell, Clerk Sorrell, has it together? Or would you like us to restate it?
The commentary is sufficient.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we're back on track. Is there comment from the public on this item? See, Mr. Monte?
I was at city council meetings back in seventies or eighties, when the city council passed an ordinance regulating massage parlors. And I remember it took, I think it took two, maybe three meetings to go through refining everything, because it was the first pass, okay? Nobody had heard of this before in Carbondale. And then, some point, what, 10, 15 years ago, the city abolished the ordinance. And I think the rationale was something like, well, state licenses this and they'll take care of it. And from what I'm hearing, the state isn't taking care of it. And, uh, so I have no problems with doing this, but I'm curious to know from the city attorney, how much of this ordinance is basically the ordinance that was previously passed and then repealed?
I didn't look at the old ordinance that closely, but we had this draft in place before Mr. Sorrell found the, uh, old ordinance. Uh, this is based on a couple of other communities. But the reason the old ordinance was repealed, it was actually a license for, not the parlors, but for the massage therapists themselves. And the state, and when the ordinance was repealed, was the state had then finally established a state licensure and preempted home rule communities on that, so we couldn't have that one. This is licensing the, the establishments themselves, so it's outside of the scope of the individual licenses.
Good, thank you. One other little fine point, so other people have been talking about going to massage establishments, um, legitimate ones. I was looking at the exempted ones in, in the medical area, and having had to endure physical therapy for a couple of months, um, would this cover, would the exemptions cover a place that's not a doctor's office, and it's not a hospital, but it's a medical facility? And looking at the technical wording...
If it's a licensed medical facility that's authorized to, to receive a referral from a physician, then it would be excluded.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. And I believe there was another comment from the back?
I'm just kind of...
Okay, I'm kind of confused here for a minute. So, you're saying that a private massage therapies, therapist, you didn't want to charge them a fee?
I'm completely misunderstanding the structure of what is being proposed here, and that's my fault. So, I, I kind of jumped without being completely informed. Now, I'm looking at what's actually being, now that I can see the document, uh, I kind of take away everything I've said up to this point.
Okay, because I was kind of confused, because I'm like...
Me too.
Okay. So, you're taking back what you said, right? Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. We're all struggling a bit with the new system. It's not a bad system, it's just a new system, and it's different than what we're accustomed to, uh, which is why we started late tonight. Any further comment from the public? Uh, bring it back up here, Mr. Stanfield?
Okay, so, to kind of reel this back in, my concerns are already addressed in, in the proposal here, uh, in terms of exempting legitimate businesses licensed through their professional state organizations. So, I, I don't think that there needs to be any sort of amendment at this point, because I think it's already been, um, handled correctly.
Let me, um, clarify this with the city attorney, make sure I understand. Uh, i-if you are a legitimate massage therapist, whether, uh, working in a, a place with other massage therapists or working out of your home, uh, are you exempted? Or would that only be if you are further licensed to take referrals from doctors and bill insurance?
So, places that are exempt are state-licensed physicians, osteopathic physicians, podiatrists, chiropractors, physical therapists, naparathists, or registered nurses acting within their respective state practice acts. State-licensed practical nurses, hospitals, and nursing homes, while administering massages in normal course of medical duties. Uh, state-registered athletic trainers, acting within the Athletic Trainers Practice Act, so that'd be like a school trainer or something along those lines, those are all exempted. So, a massage therapist who is working at an establishment isn't licensed by us. The establishment that is hosting them is licensed. So, most, what we're looking at is, I guess what you really qualify as, almost like day balls who offer massage as a, uh, practice.
But there was, uh, I mean, maybe I misread it, but there was a, uh, fee per therapist, right?
Yes, there's a fee per therapist that works at that facility, and that's so that we know how many legitimate...
Right.
...individuals are working there. So, if we go in there and a person's working who is not legitimate, we know we have to do a further inspection.
What was initially proposed is that it would be $100 per establishment plus $100 per therapist?
That is correct.
And the motion, as it stands right now, as amended, would make that 25 per establishment, five additional per therapist?
That is correct.
Okay, and are you still good with that?
So, aren't, aren't the legitimate businesses exempted here?
No.
Okay, what am I misunderstanding?
It's, it, they have to be medical providers, essentially. So, like, I, I hate to even say the name, because I don't want to be seen as, like, endorsing them. Uh, but the place that I've gone is N Sync on South 51, and it's like, you know, I mean, it's a crunchy place. It's like incense and yoga and massages. And so, uh, it works, as I understand it, kind of the way most, uh, hair salons work, where there's somebody who's kind of running the place, and then you rent your chair from them. Um, and so what they would need to do is, uh, N Sync, the business, would need to pay a hundred dollars to get this license. They would also need to pay another hundred dollars for each of the therapists who uses a room there, uh, which can add up. There were six or seven of them when I was going there. It's been several years since I've gone. And what your amendment would do would be drastically reduce those fees. Are we all still good? Do we make any changes?
Are you, Mr. Stanfield, are you keeping your amendment friendly?
Yes, yes, I'd like to keep my amendment at 25 and 5.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, Ms. Roberts?
Two things to that. One is, um, there are establishments where people rent the space. There are also establishments where they pay the massage therapist. Um, you know, they, maybe they charge $80 per massage, but then the massage therapist gets $30 and they're actual an employee. So, there's that. But also, and I'm glad that we are reducing the fee, because then, um, I was wondering how that schedule would work for an independent massage therapist who does not work for a bigger business there in practice, for, like, I was. I was in practice for myself, and I had clients. I didn't work at a N Sync or a massage IMB or, you know, what have you. I mean, I did some, but, um, so that, you know, that's a whole different section. So, then they would be both the owner and the massage therapist, so they would end up being, uh, fee twice on the schedule as the owner and the massage therapist?
I think that'd be a question of interpretation, but if I were the one being asked to interpret it, they would pay just as the owner, because there would be no additional massage therapist.
So, owner-operator would be just one fee?
That's the way I interpret it. That's the way, when I was writing it, that's how I envisioned it, that if you're a sole practitioner, working out of a, uh, mall front, frontage store, or something like that, that you would pay the $25, well, the $100 fee that I had suggested. Uh, but in this situation, pay the $25 fee, and that would be it. Uh, if you added an additional massage therapist to your lineup, then you'd pay the additional, uh, fee, so that we would know that there's another licensed individual in that location.
Okay, I think that should be clarified in there, that if you're sole practitioner, this is your fee structure.
I would suggest that we, uh, if it's necessary to get that specifically in the ordinance, that we just bring back an amendment at the next meeting to clarify that?
Yeah, this does not go into effect until April 30th. So, beginning, it goes into effect on the first day of the fiscal year, so we have time to tinker with this if there's anything that somebody comes up with that is an issue.
Okay, thank you.
And those kind of clarifications would be something that could go on the consent agenda, I would think, like, just minor amendments? Okay. Uh, so, are we all good here? Are we ready to vote? All right. Uh, no further comment from the public? Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Columbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Los?
Yes. Uh, that ordinance passes. Uh, the next item is an ordinance amending Title V of the Carbondale Revised Code by adding Chapter 20, Licensing and Regulation of Retail Establishments That Sell Tobacco and Hemp-Derived THC Products Within the City of Carbondale, and an ordinance authorizing a 3% tax on hemp-derived THC products and other intoxicating cannabinoids.
In recent years, the retail market for vape products, traditional tobacco and hemp-derived THC items, has expanded rapidly, creating new public health, consumer safety, and regulatory challenges for municipalities. The absence of a local licensing framework limits the city's ability to effectively monitor these businesses, ensure compliance with state and federal regulations, and respond to emerging risks associated with these products. Public health and youth access concerns. Vape and tobacco retailers are major points of access for nicotine and THC products amongst underage, among underage individuals. The city, uh, the city's enforcement history underscores these concerns. In 2023, the city conducted a compliance-stinging operation in which only one establishment passed. All failing retailers paid fines, all failing retailers paid fines. In 2025, a second sting involving 15 establishments resulted in eight failures, demonstrating ongoing widespread non-compliance with age restriction laws. These results demonstrate the need for a licensing framework that supports regular compliance checks, creates clear accountability, and allows for stronger enforcement measures, such as license, suspension, or revocation, to prevent unlawful sales and protect youth. Consumer safety and product and tech... derivatives, has grown faster than regulatory systems can adapt. These products often vary widely in potency, purity, labeling accuracy, and safety. Without licensing, the city cannot reliably track retailers or ensure that products meet applicable safety and labeling standards. A licensing program enables the city to monitor lawful sourcing, product handling practices, and compliance with state and federal requirements. Oversight of Rapidly Changing Industry. Vape, tobacco, and hemp-derived THC shops frequently open, close, or change ownership, making it difficult for the city to maintain accurate information on operators. Licensing creates a verified registry of businesses, allowing for coordinated enforcement, proactive communication of regulatory updates, and early identification of problem establishments. This strengthens local oversight and reduces strain on police and code enforcement resources. Alignment with State and Federal Compliance Requirements. Illinois regulates tobacco, vaping products, and hemp-derived THC, but relies heavily on local governments for on-the-ground enforcement of these rules. Licensing allows the city to ensure compliance with mandated age restrictions, packaging and advertising rules, and product prohibitions. Moreover, administrative tools available through licensing, such as fines, suspension, and revocation, give the city enforcement options beyond what is available under criminal statutes. Local Sales Tax on Hemp-Derived Cannabinoid Products. In conjunction with the licensing program, the city is proposing the adoption of a 3% local sales tax on hemp-derived cannabinoid products as defined in Public Law Number 119-37. While Public Law 119-37 defines these products federally, it neither authorizes nor prohibits local taxation. The proposed tax relies on the city's existing taxing authority and serves several important functions. One, ensures that hemp-derived THC retailers contribute to the costs of oversight, enforcement, and public health impacts. Two, creates consistent expectation and compliance obligations for all retailers selling intoxicating THC products. And three, places hemp-derived THC retailers on a similar local footing as state-regulated cannabis dispensaries, which are also subject to a 3% municipal cannabis retailer's tax. By aligning the tax structure, the city promotes fairness and regulatory consistency across businesses selling intoxicating THC products regardless of source. Protecting Community Character and Reducing Nuisance Activity. Poorly managed vape and THC retailers can generate nuisance conditions, including loitering, improper disposal of vape waste, unlawful on-site consumption, and the sale of high-potency or mislabeled products. Licensing allows the city to establish minimum operating standards, require owner disclosures, and ensure that businesses operate responsibly in alignment with community expectations. Implementing a local licensing system for vape, tobacco, and hemp-derived THC retailers provide the city with critical oversight tools to protect public health, prevent youth access, ensure product safety, and strengthen regulatory compliance. The city's sting operations in 2023 and 2025 demonstrate widespread violations and highlight the inadequacy of fines alone. The addition of a 3% local sales tax on hemp-derived cannabinoid products further supports enforcement efforts, aligns the regulatory environment with that of cannabis dispensaries, and ensures a fair and consistent approach to businesses selling intoxicating THC products. The recommended action... The recommended action is to adopt an ordinance establishing licensing of establishments that sell at retail tobacco, vape, and hemp-derived cannabinoid products, and adopt an ordinance imposing a 3% municipal tax on the retail sale of hemp-derived cannabinoid products.
Thank you, is there a motion? Mr. Columbo?
I would move that we adopt an ordinance amending Title V of the Carbondale Revised Code by adding Chapter 20, Licensing and Regulation of Retail Establishments That Sell Tobacco and Hemp-Driven THC Products Within the City of Carbondale, and an ordinance authorizing a 3% tax on hemp-derived THC products and other intoxicating cannabinoids.
Thank you, is there a second? Mr. Stanfield?
I'll second that.
All right, is there any discussion on this item? Ms. Kelman?
Just a small story, since Mayor Harvey's not here. Well, no, she wouldn't let me tell it if she was, but I came to a city council meeting whenever Carbondale was approving and attempting to regulate cannabis, when it had first legalized and we were adopting a tax, and it was a point of extreme contention between Councilperson Los and Mayor, at the time, Mike Henry, and they were like hotly going back and forth, and it just kept going on and on and on. And I remember Mayor Harvey, at the time, Councilperson Harvey, raising her hand, and it was between like 1% and 3%, 1% and 3%. One of you was arguing for 1, the other one was arguing for 3. She said, "I make a motion that it's 2." We split the difference, and this is like after 30 minutes of arguing, right? They split the difference, they both agreed to it, she's the only person who voted against her own motion, she just wanted it to move forward. So, that's my little story.
For the record, I was arguing for 1%. I wanted the lowest tax in the area. I wanted to make sure we cornered the cannabis market in Southern Illinois. Other discussion? Mr. Columbo?
Yeah, I just, you know, there is a difference between folks who do business the right way and folks who do not necessarily do business the right way. And I appreciate folks who do business the right way showing up this evening to this meeting, whether they speak on this particular item or not, it is, you know, good that we have some level, you know, oversight of these various organizations. I will say, it was interesting to me, reading through this, just in regards to, you know, the access to youth here. I have teenagers that are in high school, and all I can think of is just how uninterested they are in doing anything bad or illicit these days, and I wonder if that is just the prevailing trend amongst young people these days, that they're not actually interested in getting into trouble like they may have, you know, decades ago. But nevertheless, you know, I appreciate staff bringing this forward, I think it is a reasonable tax that, you know, as far as bang for your buck goes, that if somebody's going to spend $100 in an establishment such as this, that $3 on top of what they're already spending, if you compare that to a night out at the bar, that this is a more than reasonable amount that we are levying, and, you know, we'll see what the benefit of the dollars that we pull in look like.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? Anybody else? Well, I'll say something, and then we'll turn it over to the public. I'm glad the state of Illinois legalized cannabis, that was the smart move. Be smart if we go ahead and legalize some additional substances, too. We call drugs controlled substances, but the reality is that they are the least controlled substances in our society, and I have had, just this year, maybe a dozen clients who have overdosed, because the substance that they actually bought is not the substance that they intended to buy. And that used to happen during the days of alcohol prohibition, too, they'd sell you all kinds of nasty stuff for alcohol. But it doesn't happen anymore, because the alcohol companies are legitimate businesses, and they don't want to lose their licenses. And so the same thing is true of drugs, and that's a popular opinion when it comes to cannabis, and it's not so popular when it comes to methamphetamine or heroin, but it's the same principle, and we should really start thinking about that, too. This thing here, this is a little odd to me, because this strikes me as kind of a gray market zone, where some of these products are sold even in places that have not legalized cannabis. I don't really understand how it works. I do think it's generally speaking good to regulate something rather than prohibit it, and taxes are necessary and good, so I'm in favor of this, unless someone gives me a good reason not to be, and maybe that's what the public will do. I see, public comment? Can you give us your name?
My name's Jacob Buckman, I'm the owner of Illegal Smile Head Shop and the grocery store here in Carbondale. I've been here for six years, and this, this one really does concern me. I understand that the 3% isn't a whole lot, but my biggest fear is, since I've been in business, I've done everything I can to abide by the rules, pay my taxes, do everything I can to fly on the straight line, and I feel like that this is really going to set up honest businessmen to fail, because there's going to be a lot of, I'll say it, some of my competitors, I have a fear that you guys are going to have a very, very hard problem figuring out who's selling what, because if you have a, if you have a company, or if you have a business selling THCA flower, if I'm selling you THCA flower, who's to say that I'm not putting this in my system as CBD or something else? How are you guys going to regulate what is sold at each of all of these establishments? And also, is there going to be a fee on that license, like you were talking about on that last amendment, you guys have implemented a fee on that license? Is there going to be a license on this?
There is a fee associated with it, it's $1,000 per year. In terms of your questioning about regulatory practices, anything that contains THC or as defined in the ordinance would be applied to the tax, and right now, to the point of Mayor Protem, there's a number of substances that are in that gray area that the state is working on also legislating, and that is a pending, and you've seen that the federal government has also legislated a number of these substances that have been for a long time left undefined in the Hemp Agricultural Act. So, this is an attempt to level the playing field, there are a number of substances that contain THC and cannabinoids, as stated in the background, that have, aren't strictly regulated by statute, because they've changed and evolved to a degree that they weren't considered at the time that those statutes were created, so...
So, you're saying that it's going to cost me $1,000 for that license?
Yes.
So, we're going to charge a $25 licensing fee over arguably human trafficking? And I'm going to pay a $1,000 fee for, to sell the products that I'm already selling?
That was the decision of council to reduce that fee schedule, as you just listened to, so that's still the pleasure of the council, of what this licensing fee would be if they approved the ordinance, but that is the proposed licensing fee. As we assess the revenues based on these types of sales throughout the community, we felt that that was a fair assessment for licensing.
I would really hope that you guys could somehow push this off to the next meeting. That $1,000 is a significant amount on top of your 3% tax. I'm, I've opened all three of our stores on my own, I don't have deep pockets like consume, I understand you guys want to tax everybody the same to be fair, but unfortunately, we don't live in a fair world, and I think all of you guys know that. I just have great concern on how you guys are going to regulate this.
Well, in terms of fairness, there's licensed cannabis dispensaries that pay well in excess of $1,000 licensing fees, that sell very similar products, that...
I understand that.
And I can't speak to what you're selling, but...
Those are dispensaries that have paid that fee, and we're not a dispensary, we sell hemp-derived products, so...
Exactly.
We weren't in that, so, I mean, I just, just ask, because, you know, I'm just a local business guy trying to do business in Carbondale, I mean, I appreciate you guys, I appreciate what you guys do, but yeah, I mean, there's, that will bring some significant impacts on your, on your small businesses. Thank you.
We appreciate your business.
Can I ask you a clarifying question while you're up? The substances that we're talking about here, are they, I've never known this, are they actually intoxicating?
See, that's what really bothers me, is a lot of people don't know, that's very concerning. They can be, they can be.
Like Delta-8 THC, as opposed to Delta-9?
So, Delta-8 THC is a synthetic process, or is a synthetic, we do not sell synthetic...
So that's not hemp-derived?
No.
Okay.
Technically it is, but there is a synthetic process that takes place to create Delta-8, and we do our best to not do anything synthetic. I'm not saying that there isn't some things in our store that aren't, but, yeah, I mean, they are, they can be intoxicating, yeah, for sure.
And then, are you asking for the, both ordinances to be postponed, or just the licensing ordinance?
Both of them would be fantastic. I understand, you know, like, the 3% tax is, you know, we can live with that, but that $1,000 licensing fee is a hit. I will say, your guys' tests that you ran in 2023 and 2025 with your sting operations, my store, my store was clean. I've, knock on wood, we've done our best to abide by your guys' laws, and I would greatly appreciate a little bit of, a little bit of leeway on that $1,000, because that's, that's going to be tough.
Give me a sense of what would be a more reasonable fee in this market?
Half.
Half?
Yeah.
If it were down to $400, $500, you'd be all right with it?
I can live with that.
Okay.
I can live with that, especially, especially with what's coming on the next agenda, yeah.
What's coming then?
No, I mean, on your next matter.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Yeah, because you'll hear from me on there, too.
I was wondering how you got that information, I don't have it.
I apologize, if I knew I was going to be speaking publicly, I would have cut my mullet.
I think the mullet probably increases your credibility here.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Is there additional public comment? Mr. Monti?
A couple things. The ordinance itself applies licensing to vape products, but when I read the agenda, this published agenda, and I think it's the same that was published on the website, word vape wasn't in here, so those people may not know that this was going to be part of the deal, which is maybe a deal, or maybe it isn't a deal. On the history, and the city manager was right, in referring to the stuff going on at the federal level, because when Congress several years ago allowed the sale of products derived from hemp, they thought they were dealing with very low-grade kind of stuff. And then, as growers were able to do some, like in any other kind of crop, make it bigger and better and more potent, then we find out where we are in a situation where some of the products are not what Congress intended, and, as I recall, the so-called Big Beautiful Bill that was just passed a couple months ago, as I've been reading, is going to severely cut back what's going to be allowed based on federal level. And I think Mitch McConnell's having a fit over it, because he has a lot of growers in his state who feel like they're going to take a hit. But in any event, I think that's something to just think about in terms of all this discussion, is that, you know, what the feds are doing may substantially alter this marketplace, at least for the hemp-derived products in the near future. But the other point that occurred to me when I read through this, this applies to the sale of all tobacco products, vape products, and the hemp-derived THC products, okay? And a $1,000 fee then means that Kroger pays $1,000, I guess they can sell all three products for $1,000, okay? The little corner guy, you know, he pays $1,000, too, and I just wonder if there's any equity on that, that's all. I mean, you've got some big corporations, and $1,000 is no big deal, you know, that's one minute's sweat gone through the till, but...
I think you would look at that in relation to like liquor licensing as well, same thing?
Yeah, our liquor licenses as well, we have some, at least we used to have some gradation in it, so just a thought, so...
Is there additional public comment? Yes, sir?
I would just like to ask a clarifying question. The 3% tax and the fees that you are looking to impose on additional businesses, what is your exact agenda behind that? is your exact agenda behind that?
The intent is to level the playing field with what is legally taxed right now for cannabis products and dispensaries to what is also being sold in other establishments under the hemp exemptions that law allows for those same products to be taxed as well. And as those have evolved and have the intoxicating compounds that we've discussed already here tonight, that those should be equally taxed.
Okay, so there was a mention about youth purchase as well, correct? So is the intent to try and discriminate with that because, I apologize, I-
Two separate issues.
Yeah, no, no. So if it's to encourage businesses to not sell the youth because they have to keep a licensing fee, I'm a little curious on why the city itself lowered the entry age to bars in this area to 18, knowing that every product inside of a bar establishment or liquor store has to be 21 and above, which is the same requirements for a head shop purchasing THC or hemp-derived products?
Well-
I can actually answer that one for you.
Yes, please.
The reason for that was so that there could be all ages shows. I don't know-
In bars?
Yeah, I don't know how old you are, but when I was a kid in the 90s, that's, that was like a huge thing, you know, and you would hear it. This was before the Telecommunications Act in 1996, when we had good radio. And so that's how you would learn about things. And they would say, oh, well, there's, you know, there's a show, you know, so it's like, oh, is it all ages? No, aw, man, you know? So I went to all ages shows at Mississippi Nights sometimes, but other times I couldn't go because I wasn't 21. So that, that was the purpose. I don't know if kids still do that, but whoever proposed that thought that we, that they would. And I was supposed to ask you, you did not state your name. Could you go ahead?
Oh, I said it before on my first entry.
Yeah, I know, you got to say it every time.
Harris Marks.
Harris Marks, thanks.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
Any other comment from the audience? Mr. Harvey, I, if you have a comment on this item that is substantive to this item, I would recognize you. If you are planning to repeat your comments from before, we're on notice about those, and those would not be recognized.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. So this is a substantive comment on this item?
Yes.
Okay, come on up.
Mayor, city manager, Mayor Sane Hostagirus K. Harvey, Z.A.N.I.-H.O.S.T.A.G.I., J.A.I.R. U.S.K. H.A.R.V.E.Y. I ask that you, since this has to deal with taxes, that you save the city, save the city coffers, save the city businesses who seek to have cannabis licenses, save the consumers, the residents, as well as the bank that the city uses from dealing with the uncivilized actions that have happened here today. Please do not taint the city coffers with blood money, for your blood is stained with, your hands are stained with the blood of a Negro. Witnessed and halted no action though. Until your hands are clean, this diocese is remade or new one is purchased, all things that are spoken on, voted on, passed or denied, passed but not denied, well, actually, I don't know, it could be either, will be tainted with your uncivilized action. So please do not burn the city because you seek to be high or raise yourself or pretend to be do so. All you had to do was do a good deed though, not steal a man's spirit since he is a Negro.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
End.
Is there any further discussion from the audience? Okay, then we'll bring it back up to council. What's your pleasure? Do we want to entertain a motion to reduce that fee? I think that'd be entirely reasonable.
I have two, I would like to make them as two separate motions, and I've got them written the way that I would make them.
I think we've got a motion and a second on the table.
Do we?
Yeah, I believe we've got a motion by-
Then I would like to make a friendly amendment specifically. What's, were we adopting it all as one?
They are two different ordinances. One is, it creates the licensing structure, and that's the one that would impose that-
Was the motion read all as one?
I think he made them back to back, so it'd be one vote.
All right. On the, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to modify the licensing fee to $500.
Mr. Columbo, is that an acceptable amendment?
I would accept that amendment.
And who had the second on this?
I would-
Is it Mr. Stanfield? Is that acceptable to you as well?
It's acceptable to me.
Okay, thank you. That amendment is accepted. And was there another amendment that you wanted to make?
No, that was it.
Okay. Is there anything else that we want to do before we vote? All right. Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Columbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Kilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Los?
Yes, and thank you for coming here and giving us insight into your business and for doing business in Carbondale. Thank you. That ordinance is adopted, and that brings us to the last item on our agenda. This is an ordinance amending Title 14, Chapter 7, as it relates to the possession and sale of drugs within the city of Carbondale by adding kratom to the list of prohibited drugs.
Kratom, with its scientific name I won't pronounce, is an unregulated psychoactive substance increasingly sold in gas stations, convenience stores, vape shops, and other retail environments across the United States. Derived from the leaves of Southeast Asian tree, kratom contains the alkaloids mitogrenine and seven-hydroxymitogrenine, which act on opioid receptors in the brain and can produce stimulant effects at low doses and opioid-like effects, including dependence at higher doses. Despite its growing availability, kratom is not approved by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, FDA, for any medical, therapeutic, or recreational use. The FDA has issued multiple warnings about kratom's risks, including addiction, withdrawal, respiratory depression, liver damage, seizures, and in certain cases, even death. Federal health agencies have also warned that kratom products sold in the United States often lack labeling accuracy, vary widely in potency, and may be contaminated with heavy metals, salmonella, and other harmful substances. Because kratom is not subject to any federal manufacturing or purity standards, consumers have no reliable way to determine product safety. Kratom products are routinely sold without age restrictions, often in forms such as gummies, powdered drinks, and flavored shots that appeal to youth. The absence of statewide regulation creates a gap in which high-risk products are readily accessible to minors and vulnerable individuals, including those with substance use disorders. The expanding retail availability of kratom within the city, combined with the lack of regulatory oversight, presents public health challenges similar to those associated with other unregulated intoxicating substances. Unlike cannabis or alcohol, which are subject to robust state licensing and testing requirements, kratom is sold with no mandatory age verification, no potency limits, no contaminant screening, and no disclosure of ingredients. This creates significant risk for users and places a burden on local public safety and healthcare resources. Given these concerns, many states and municipalities across the country have enacted restrictions or outright bans on the sale, possession, or distribution of kratom to mitigate public health risk and prevent youth access. Implementing a local ordinance regulating or prohibiting kratom would allow the city to address these risks proactively, safeguard the health and safety of residents, and reduce the availability of unregulated opioid-like substances within the community. This ordinance is therefore presented to the city council to protect public welfare, promote consumer safety, and ensure a responsible regulatory environment regarding the sale and possession of kratom within the city limits. The recommended action is to adopt an ordinance amending Title 14, Chapter 7, by adding kratom to the list of drugs prohibited within the city of Carbondale.
Is there a motion? Why don't we have discussion without a motion? Is there any discussion? Ms. Roberts?
So I appreciate the work that went into bringing this ordinance forward. The concerns outlined in the background materials, the lack of manufacturing standards, inconsistent potency, contamination risks, and youth access are very real. And I agree that the current regulatory void leaves our residents without basic consumer protections. The FDA has issued public health advisories for many years, but we are still in a national regulatory gap. Federal agencies have not moved forward with scheduling natural kratom, in part because the research remains limited and inconclusive, and in part because past attempts to ban it promoted significant public health concerns for individuals trying to manage chronic pain, anxiety, or withdrawal symptoms when other treatments have failed or when they don't have access. In a perfect world, people wouldn't self-medicate and self-treat, but we do not live in that world. A ban does not take away their health challenges, it only removes safer, regulated options. In the meantime, the FDA has recently moved to schedule certain synthetic 7O products separately from natural kratom, which is an important distinction when we evaluate risk and the appropriate local response. Across the country, we have seen several regulatory approaches emerge. Rhode Island reversed its statewide kratom ban and replaced it with a regulatory framework focused on product testing and labeling. Utah, Arizona, Nevada, Colorado, and Oklahoma have enacted Kratom Consumer Protection Act (KCPA) laws that regulate age limits, product purity, and labeling rather than prohibiting kratom outright. And Rockford, Illinois recently acted to prohibit only the synthetic 7O products while allowing regulated natural kratom. These jurisdictions move towards regulation instead of prohibition because bans alone were not reducing access, especially with online sales and neighboring communities providing alternate sources, and because prohibition increases enforcement needs without improving consumer safety. A full ban, as proposed here, would not eliminate availability. People can still purchase kratom online or nearby towns, and it would place enforcement burdens on our police department without guaranteeing better health outcomes. Giving the, given the uncertainty in the scientific evidence, mixed findings around risks and benefits, the trend towards regulatory frameworks nationally and within Illinois, as well as hearing from people locally who have asked to keep this as a legal alternative, I'm hesitant to support a full ban at this time. I believe that a regulatory approach would allow the city to address youth access and product contamination much better.
Thank you. Is there other discussion? Ms. Kilman? I wanted to call you Ms. Kimmel. That is not your name.
Close enough. Honey, I'll respond to anything as long as you call me. So there is currently a bill that's introduced in the 104th General Assembly in Illinois called the Kratom Consumer Protection Act, and it provides a whole lot of stuff, but essentially what it does is it imposes stricter state regulations. Right now, it's legal for anyone to buy kratom over the age of 18. This regulates its makeup and imposes a series of taxes and penalties, burdens, for people who violate this act, and it is currently making its way through Springfield. I don't know that it's entirely necessary for us to regulate it in the way that is proposed here, but I would be open to further discussion.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Anything?
I agree with both my colleagues, and this is only banned in seven states out of the 50. There are only a few communities surrounding us that have the ban, so as Don stated, it would be still so very easy to obtain it. I received multiple letters in my email about people who, like me, deal with chronic pain and have no way to fight it. So I like the idea of looking what the state comes up with and what is coming with some kind of regulations. Of course, children shouldn't be receiving it. And there's all these articles about how it has positive effects just like it has negative effects, but so does alcohol. So that's my spiel on it. I would like to see us either way, put this off and vote on it at another time, or either come back with some less regulations than the total ban.
Thank you. Is there discussion from this side? Mr. Stanfield?
Okay, so I got some things-
All right.
-to say. First off, I got, I think we probably all got the same emails from some folks who depend on kratom for their chronic pain. Almost exactly six years ago, I started chemotherapy. For about a year and a half, I went through chemotherapy. For the first six months, I didn't have any real alternative for pain management. There was the ability to get a medical marijuana card, and SAH didn't recognize that as a legitimate source of pain management. I couldn't get the cards through my own doctors. I had to go through a convoluted process with another doctor who specialized in this sort of thing. It's, it's, you know, a long and, I'm sure, very common story for people. I was able to get that card, but during that time, I had to resort to some other methods for my chronic pain. As soon as I got the card, then the state of Illinois legalized everything, and so the whole point was moot. And, and so I look at something like this and think that we need to let the state and the federal government sort this out before we regulate it. I'm all for taxing, and I'm all for licensing, you know, the way we were just discussing with THC products. But for something like this, where some, some folks really are depending on it as a stopgap measure in a system, in a medical system, that's not always working right, I think that just adding possession of this as, as a, you know, decriminalize possession is, is, is inhumane right now before we have all the information. I think honestly, we should table something like this until we, until the legislation comes through the state, until we figure out what's going on there, and until the FDA figures out what to do other than say, you know, it's just, it feels like another version of Reefer madness, that I'm, I'm not entirely convinced we need to jump on that boat right now.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Columbo?
First, I'd like to say thank you for your vulnerability in your statements, Councilmember Stanfield felt. Second, the thing that really stuck out to me in this was the criminalization of possession. The last thing that we need is, okay, it's not, all right, thank you for the correction. Yeah, please.
So this is not prohibiting possession? This is prohibiting the sale of the unregulated substance? Yeah, it's misleading in terms of the language using there, used there, but it's for the distribution sale, not the possession of it itself. It has to do with regulating the fact that this is a substance that isn't regulated by state or federal entities.
Thank you for that clarification. The, the other thing that I wanted to do was just to read one of these emails that we had received as, as council members, and it states, "I'm a 40-year-old, healthy Illinois resident and law-abiding citizen. I've been consuming kratom tea for over 15 years to help with insomnia, joint pain, and sometimes ADHD, which helps me do my job as an implementation specialist. I'm writing because I'm concerned about the proposed ordinance that would criminalize..." Okay, you know what? I hadn't read this all through a second time since the statements of management, but point being here that, you know, we, we've received feedback from the general public saying, hey, here's, here's the positive effects that this has had on our lives, and while I'm all for what everybody up here has said this evening, you know, I, I appreciate that we've all come to kind of this general consensus around follow the state and follow the science, and I am where my colleagues are on this. Thank you.
Okay, before I ask for a comment from the public- Okay, before I ask for a comment from the public, I mean, you don't have to be good at counting votes to see that we, the votes are not there to pass this tonight. Would our parliamentarian like a motion to postpone that to a date certain? Or should we take no action? You have a preference?
If the decision is to not pass this at all at this time and wait for the state, it doesn't really matter if you postpone it. We can still bring it back after the state takes their actions. And just quickly reading through the bill that is currently floating out there, it would preempt home rule anyway.
Okay. Well, we'll think about that while we take comments from the public. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment? Yes, sir.
I waited two and a half hours for this to come up, so...
So did we.
I really, my name is Jacob Buckman, owner of Legal Smile. I greatly appreciate all of you. I've been, as a business owner, I've been through this in Harrisburg and Marion. I didn't go to those city council meetings. One, because I was not aware. They did it under the table, they didn't tell anybody. And there's also a lot of pretentious jerks in those areas. And you guys, I really am thankful for you guys and the homework that you guys have done. My question is, does everybody up here know what kratom is? Does anybody know, does anybody know what kratom? Do you know, does everybody up here know what kratom is?
It's a leaf.
It's a leaf, you're right. And I just wanted to, if there was any uncertainties, I was here to... I mean, I've got a five-minute speech, but I'm not gonna bore you guys with that because it sounds like you're on my team right now. But again, I just wanted to thank you guys, and if you guys had any questions or any clarifications about the products, I brought them with me so you guys could see them. I know some people don't even know, or...
I do have a question as somebody who's sort of in the business. The one that really stood out for me when I was researching was the Rockford, Illinois, and that they prohibited the synthetic 7O products while leaving the natural kratom. And that was something that I had thought maybe would be not a bad idea, because the data that I was looking at when I was researching the actual, you know, deaths and all of that, it really showed that the overdose deaths that are talked about are from people who are using kratom that have been, that have synthetic additives. And that is really what the big problem is. And so, if there's a way for us to regulate that section of it, but leaves the natural product alone, I would, I think that would be substantive and helpful.
I mean, yeah, that's definitely a viable option. I just, to be honest, I've seen the 7OH give kratom a bad name. They are very, very similar, but somebody had a good reference earlier. You know, it's like, this is Bush in a beer. This is like a shot of Everclear. I mean, they're huge, they're very, very, very big difference. But again, I won't waste any more of your time. I appreciate you guys, and thank you very much.
Mr. Colombo's got a question for you, if you don't mind.
You know, and don't feel obligated to answer this now, but perhaps at a later point in time, or even engaging with staff. But, you know, as a proprietor of a business that sells this product, what your thoughts would be on best practices at a municipal level for regulating the sale and transactions of this product? You know, knowing that there are various actors in the market with these products, right? Similar to the, you know, the feedback that you gave us on the regulation for THC products and the cost for licensing there. You know, what would you see as best practices in regulating these products that you sell?
I think the best practice is to wait and see what, you know, the state decides. Because, I mean, you guys have got all those emails. I hear recovery story after recovery story. I mean, bringing people to tears how kratom has saved their life and brought, you know, given them their life back. I've seen kratom help far more people than I've ever seen it harm. There, and you know, like, you can talk bad about the extracts all you want, but there are plenty of our customers, I mean, a big giant majority of our customers are contributing members to society. I mean, I deal with, I mean, veterans, nurses, teachers, law enforcement, health department employees, and so on. It, there is a place for kratom in our society, and I think our community deserves that right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Come on up, sir. Gotta give us your name again.
I'll say it for the third time.
Yep.
Eric Sparks. Jacob brought an interesting point. Ms. Roberts, I want to say I appreciate your actual knowledge and ability to dig into what it is that this is, what's actually going on. The difference between 7OH and actual powder kratom is vastly different. This is saying, I need to know the difference between natural marijuana and heroin. Completely different perspectives. As somebody who has personally used it for multiple, multiple years, who was prescribed medication after medication after medication by the VA to counteract the side effects of the medications they were giving me, kratom actually allowed me to come off of nine separate medications. And I have felt significantly better, and I have been a productive member of society for quite some time. I'm not drug-seeking, I'm looking at pain management. I've had 15 back surgeries. I am double-fused from my L3 down to my S1. I served my country for eight years, and I did a lot. Kratom honestly helped me. Jacob honestly helped me navigate the ways of safely mitigating this product without trying to serve me an illicit addictive material. He helped me. And it's people like this man that actually make a difference in the community, and that's where education needs to come in. And people need to educate themselves. And they need to seek out the differences between 7OH and actual product of kratom powder. Those are the actual differences. And if you guys don't know the differences between the two, I highly encourage you to look at those differences. I really, really do, because it's people like this man and his shop is what saves multiple people a day from being on opioids, from being on other sorts of narcotics that do far more damage to our communities than what somebody dosing up a couple teaspoons of powder on a, maybe a morning basis, does. It does far greater good than what it does bad. You don't have people robbing, killing each other for kratom. You have them doing it for drugs, not for kratom. And these are very solid alternatives that need to be looked at, analyzed. Also FYI, Tylenol has 500 annual deaths per year. Kratom, between 2016 and 2022, had 56 supposed confirmed cases by the CDC. However, every single one of those cases, the person had other illegal substances within their bodies during that timeframe, which contributed to their death. So kratom was not the sole factor, it was a contributing factor that the hospitals made part of it. It's just like COVID. When somebody died in a car wreck and they tested positive for COVID, hospitals were saying COVID killed them. It's nonsense.
Thank you for your comments.
So, a couple things to that.
Yes, ma'am.
With, well, I have a question. But first, I want to say that single-use laundry detergent pods generated more than 12,000 calls per year during the same period, and antihistamines created nearly 95,000.
130 people annually get run over by a lawnmower. Are we gonna ban lawnmowers?
So, I wanted to thank you for your service. I work with veterans, so I hear a lot of these stories. So, one of my questions, and also to you is, and this kind of goes back to what I was saying, is, you know, in my research, I was looking at the, you know, the substance, I was looking at the legal. What I didn't really look at, though, was the actual sales. And so, is, can we separate the 7OH products from the kratom products as a regulatory?
As a consumer, I believe so.
It'd be hard. It'd be hard. I mean, I don't know how you would do it. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, ma'am. Don't mean to put you on the spot.
Sorry, I'm new at this. What can you, can you restate your question?
To regulate the 7OH products from the kratom products, so that if you're selling, you've got your shop, and you've got, you know, all of these things you're selling, is that, can we make it so that you, so that somebody cannot sell the products that have the 7OH and the synthetics in them and can only sell the natural product?
You're, I would ask you that question.
I mean, not can we, but I mean, as a physical, like the products themselves, is it, would it be hard to?
It would be very difficult. I don't, I mean, I don't know how you would go about that. One thing that I could see to help regulate this is whenever you go to any gas station or some of the convenience stores around, you go up there and you're paying for your items, they've got these big shelves right here in your face and right here in your face that say 7O kratom. And then all of these other, like, maybe hemp-derived products, but there's still kratom in there. That's, I mean, you have kids up there. And like, that stuff should be back there with where all the cigarettes and the other tobacco products are. As far as regulating being able to sell kratom powder and not the 7O, I have no idea how that would ever even take place. But I, I think, and this is just a thought, I think that the states will recognize kratom powder and its positivities, and also recognize 7O and its potential dangers. And hopefully, they will make the right decision. Because like I said, there's definitely a place for it here for our people.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Well, let's bring this plane in for a landing here. It's clear that we don't have the votes to pass this thing tonight. Just listening to the comments, it sounds to me like there would potentially be interest in licensing, maybe in some type of regulation. But obviously, we don't have the resources to regulate in the way that the state would. Since our parliamentarian is fine with us just taking no action, I would suggest that's what we do. And, you know, staff wanted to poll council on how to proceed from there. That would be a way to get to the next step, if there is a next step. Mr. Stanfield?
Do you need a motion to take no action?
I don't think so. So, that was our last item on the agenda. So there being no further business to come before this council, we are adjourned.